Welcome, everyone.
And welcome to this special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Third Laguna Hills Mutual, a California nonprofit mutual benefit corporation. This is a special election meeting, and we're making it a town hall. Today is June 7th, 2021, and this is a virtual meeting. It's at 9:30 today. So we wish to welcome everybody here, and we'll just explain a little bit about what we're doing. We have different cameras in the boardroom here. And if you don't know, Zoom takes a special camera, and TV six cameras that are here also film for Granite us. So we're synchronizing today these two different methods of communication. So without further ado, just want to introduce our board members. On my right is Director Jarrett, Director McCary next to me, Director Engdahl to my left, and Director Mouchnick. We are your officers serving on Third Laguna Hills Mutual. I'd like to start off this morning with a couple of announcements. Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. I need to recognize our other board members that are on Zoom, so you'll see them from time to time. At this time, I'd like Director Jarrett, she has a couple of announcements that she'd like to make, and that's in response to some calls we've received recently. So I'll let her go ahead.
Okay. Don't forget to get your ballots in by June the 28th. You can leave them at our box out in front, or you can mail them in. If you need a duplicate because you've lost or damaged your ballot, you may call the call center for the elections at 855-240-0363. And that number is available 24/7. And if you have any questions regarding the elections, please call Catherine Burkhart, Inspector of Elections, at 888-864-3528, extension 13. The ballots will be counted on Tuesday, June the 29th, at 9:30 here in the boardroom. I'd like to make another announcement about the Garden Villa rec rooms. The Garden Villa rec rooms will open on June the 15th to the residents. The mutual will not require rec rooms to remain closed after June 14th. Security will not enforce their being closed. Please do the following. Let your residents know that the rec rooms will be available to residents for use starting June 15th. While clubs may want to use your rec room until their clubhouses are available to them, that is not permitted. Inspect your rec room now to make sure it will be ready for use. All rec rooms will be cleaned between now and June 15th by the VMS cleaning staff. If you have any questions, you can call me, Lynn Jarrett, at 949-310-9001. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn, for making those announcements. Right now, I'd like to read the proposed language to replace Article 11, Section 1 of the CCNRs. And as you know, we are having our initiative dealing with insurance. So I'll just read it as it's proposed. "The mutual shall obtain and maintain a policy or policies of property insurance with extended all risk coverage for a reasonable insurance replacement value of insurable improvements of the common areas of the project and related projects. For purposes of this provision, reasonable insurance replacement value shall not be required to be 100% full insurable replacement coverage if the same is deemed by the Board of Directors to be, to not be, practical or reasonably affordable for the mutual. The Board of Directors shall endeavor to make a reasonable effort, if reasonably affordable, to maintain property insurance with a valuation that is generally acceptable to and not prohibitive by residential mortgage and secondary mortgage markets. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary contained herein, at all times, if commercially available, no matter the cost, the mutual shall maintain property insurance in an amount no less than two times the most current probable maximum loss." This is an acronym called PML. You'll hear a state that several times. So that's proposed language, and anything else in the current Article 11, Section 1 of the CCNRs would be stricken. So at this time, we'll go to member comments, and remember, three minutes, if at all possible. And our members may address the Board of Directors regarding items not on the agenda, with the exception of what we're talking about today. The Board reserves a right to limit the total time and time allotted for the open forum. Members can join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link zoom.us/j/94899806730. Or you can call 949-268-2020. You can also get in contact with us through meeting@vmsinc.org to request to speak. Okay. At this time, we'll take member comments. Do we have anyone lined up? Grant.
The first comment is from Carol Moore.
Okay, Carol, come on in.
There. Never mind. Because it took a while for the thing to come up. Good morning to the board. Thank you this morning. I am calling. I'm encouraging people to participate and vote yes. This is affecting any other part of our governing documents, and we need to get this out of the way. So I'm encouraging people, please vote yes, and help the community solve this dilemma with the insurance. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. I know you got to run with city council meetings, but thanks for making your comments this morning. Appreciate it. Okay. Is there anyone else?
Catherine Freshley.
Okay. Good morning, Catherine.
I really applaud you, the board, for the actions you're taking. You know, it's been a tough, tough year for all of us. I am absolutely supportive of the amendment, basically the requirement for having the, at least a minimum of two times the PML. This is important for all of us. However, the board does need flexibility. As many know, I, you know, I'm on the Water District Board, and I serve on the Water District Joint Powers Insurance Authority. Fully understand the difficulties for getting property insurance in California, but it's not just California, it's actually nationwide. And the challenges we have are because of the size of our community. The board needs the flexibility, and I understand that. And the board, and this amendment affects only the Article 11 of the existing 1989 CCNRs. Therefore, fully supportive of the action they had taken by the board. And as many may know, there was a group of us that had, in opposition of the previous amendments, which was a complete change of the CCNRs. We have been sending out emails encouraging the passage of this amendment. And if somebody is interested, they can send an email to Susan Smallwood at parfour@gmail.com, and she'll forward to you information that the group has put together in support of the board in their endeavor to pass this amendment. Let's recognize we need over 4,000 votes in order for this to pass. That's a challenge, but we can do it. Thank you for supporting all of us.
Thank you, Catherine. Did you want to mention a little bit about what happened on Saturday also? Oh. Okay. Maybe we can get her back. Hi, Catherine. Back with you again. You want to say something about what we did on Saturday?
Oh, yeah, that was something that, that actually Carol, Carol Moore had, had really pulled this together because, you know, and you'll see a bunch of signs out. In fact, I've got one. I hope you guys don't send, you know, call me in for a hearing, because I put the sign on my, on my balcony facing the Salle del Lago West. But we had, and maybe, maybe many of you may have seen, about 15 cars traveling through the community with signs on the side saying, vote yes. And this was the, the group that I talked about, you know, that are really advocating this approval. And so we really urge all the residents to support this. Changing the CCNRs, as anybody who's served on boards understand, is a real challenge, particularly when it takes two-thirds vote, and we got 6,102 units in this community. So you can multiply that by 67.23%, and you'll find out how many votes we need to have. So I encourage all of you to participate. And I hope those of you who are out walking through Third Mutual saw the, saw, saw the cars passing with the signs. It was really to raise awareness of the importance of this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Joe Camera is the next to speak.
Joe Cameron. Oh, okay.
Sorry. Hi, can you hear me?
Good morning, Joe.
Hi, Joe. Hey, guys. Good morning. Thanks for your effort helping the community and putting the hours in to do this right. I have a few questions. Three are on the narrative. One is the third line that says project and related projects. To me, that sounds like original wording from the foundation when we might have still been building units here. It's a little ambiguous and confusing that it might be better to change that to just units of Third Laguna Hills Mutual, but that's not my most important concern. I have a lot of concern right now overall, and two kind of red flags to me are the wording at the end of it, saying that we're going to do this no matter what the cost. I think everything we do, we should consider the cost, and I'd suggest we strike that out of the wording. It sounds like an insurance salesman might have put that in there. And then along those lines, to buy two times the maximum probable loss, that to me is a sign of not disrespecting anything, but the organization as far as spending other people's money. The analogy to me is like, if you have an automobile and you want full coverage, and then say, well, why don't I get two times full coverage? If I lose my car, I'll get two cars. Like, it makes no sense unless you're spending somebody else's money, to me. So we might want to cut that to one time, if we even keep it in. But then the most important thing to me, and hopefully there can be some responses, to make an informed decision, we're talking about millions of dollars, that it would be very useful if we could see the 50-year history of what we've spent in the past on property insurance, what the amount per manor per month was, and whether we ever utilized that, and if we saw any return on investment. And then what you're proposing now is a change. We should be able to have a five-year projection. If we pass this and get the 4,000 votes for yes, here's what we think the cost will be in the next five years. And if, and if it's no, here's what we think the cost will be. Or if we take a different approach of self-insuring, or my point of view is that at one point, this community had $100 million of reserve funds. We have a great relationship with the city, who would bolt us into state and federal resources if there ever was a catastrophic event that we needed to leverage. And so I, so I, I think we, we might be, have the cart ahead of the horse a little, or we're moving pretty fast on this, in my opinion. And base, bottom line, I don't have all the information that it would be extremely useful to see our 50-year history, what we've spent on this resource in the past, and what the five-year projections are. I know there's variability, you can't say exactly, but, but show some kind of scope. Because personally, to me, too, the two other things, if my time's not up, is I think we spent millions of dollars on this last year at this place.
Three minutes have expired.
Okay, I'm, I'm all done, but thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Our panel members like to respond?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and give a response as best I can. Joe, you're not going to like my response to any of your questions, because first of all, we cannot, at this point in time, change any of the wording of the ballot. The ballot is out there. The ballot has been received by all the members, and there's no way that we can change any of the wording. It would not be appropriate at this point to do that. In fact, it would not be legal to do that. The issue, though, of whether or not we do twice the PML or once the PML, you have to remember, the value of this Third Mutual is $1.6 billion. And if we only did one times the PML, that would mean, right now, $145 million of insurance, which would not be sufficient from a lender's standpoint to be able to continue getting loans for members in the, in the community. So it has to be more than that. And in terms of, I don't remember the other questions, but...
Oh, 50-year history?
Oh, the 50-year history. That might be of use. We've never thought about it. You're the first, this is the first time we ever heard anybody ask about that kind of information. I don't even know if that information would be available. We can certainly look. You're asking also about projecting five years into the future with regards to what the insurance cost would be if the amendment passes, also if it doesn't pass. There's absolutely no way that we can predict what the cost of insurance, property insurance is going to be. We can't even predict what it's going to be this year. We know that there's an estimate that it's going to be a 20% to 30% increase this year. Could be higher than that. We just don't know until we actually go to market and make a request to bind insurance, and then they tell us what the premium is. That's when we know. There's absolutely no way to project the four, the five years into the future either way. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Joe, I don't know whether you've heard in the past that over a year ago, the insurance company said that they didn't want to talk to us until we had a revaluation, because we had several years going on where we were valued at 700 million. And you know, when you're dealing with property, that that doesn't stay stagnant or flat. So that's why the PML was done, and we found out that 700 million was not enough to meet our fiduciary responsibility as far as the CCNRs were concerned, and that's one of the big drivers, if not the biggest driver, to this initiative. So I hope that helps you to understand a little better. Any other comments? From anyone? Okay. Next inquiry, please.
We have a written comment from Amy Remacher. The comment is, "There are two mutually exclusive statements in the new language. It states insurance will be arranged at a level of reasonable cost, then turns around and states that we will obtain two times PML regardless of cost." Problematic.
Okay. I can address that.
Okay.
Amy, the issue is that we want to have a floor or a base to work from, and that base is two times the PML. And of course, at this point, we do not know what that'll cost. Our hope really is to purchase more than two times the PML, if it is reasonable and affordable to go above that. But there has to be a certain minimum or floor that we insure for, and that would be the two times the PML. So while you're correct, and I would agree with you, that there is some distinction in the way those two statements are written, the fact is, you start with the base of the two times the PML, and then if at all possible, if it's reasonable and affordable, we'll go above that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay.
We have a comment from Nancy. The comment is, "Hearing a lot about supporting it, but we have not seen anything that exactly explains why this change is being requested. Your telephone number is not working, by the way. It says to try again later."
I think her question is if she doesn't have the information she needs. Do I understand that?
I will repeat. The comment is, "Hearing a lot about supporting it, but we have not seen anything that exactly explains why this change is being requested." It says, "Your telephone number is not working, by the way. It says to try again later."
Okay. The change is being requested because, right now, the current CCNRs require 100% replacement cost. So if we were to follow that, continue to follow that, we would have to purchase $1.6 billion of property insurance. And the cost of that, if, first of all, we don't know if we can even obtain that. Last year, if you remember, let me put in context for you. Last year, if you remember, we were still valued at $1.6 billion, but our broker could only get us $700 million of insurance. And that $700 million of insurance last year was, our share was $4.1 million in terms of our policy. The previous year, when we were valued, the whole village, at $700 million, our share of the, of that premium was only $1 million. So ours went up four times in one year. So if we were to continue down this path, this is why Carol Moore and Catherine Freshley, I think, speak so strongly in favor of the motion, is because if we were to continue down the path of having to have the 100% replacement, we're going to have to cut all sorts of services, we're going to have to do, close up shop on a number of things, and all the money is going to be going to paying for the required insurance. That's why we want to get away from the 100% requirement of the 100% replacement cost.
Okay. And also remember that on property insurance, we're talking about our structures, and we have 1,405 structures, I believe there are, that if there was a total loss, that's what we would have to cover. And that's what we're talking about on total replacement value, is if every one of them went down. But if, if, according to probable maximum loss, that would be only a portion that might be affected during a disaster of some sort that we would have to rebuild. So for better explanation, in your ballot, there's a sheet of paper in there, and I don't know whether you can see it, but on the back of it, it talks about the proposed language, as well as what is being taken out, what's proposed to be taken out. So if you would go to that, I think you'll find information there that you'll find useful. Any other comments?
Yeah. I just wanted to say, to Nancy, this is our third town hall meeting, and if you happen to have missed those, they are available on YouTube. A lot of the questions that have come in, we've answered from residents such as yourself who are not quite sure about the ballotative initiative and what we are aiming to improve. So if you have access to YouTube, I would really encourage you to go to YouTube and listen to the previous town hall meetings. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Next caller, please.
There's a Reagan comment.
Oh, okay.
A Reagan comment from Carol Moore. Can you read that?
Go ahead. Yeah, we can barely hear you.
There is a comment from Carol Moore. The comment is, "Do you have the numbers regarding ballot retrieval, or receivable, sorry, from the previous election? I am referring to when most arrived, et cetera."
Grant, I'm not sure if I understand that question.
The comment says, "Do you have the numbers regarding ballot receival from the previous election? I am referring to when most arrived, et cetera."
Oh, I think she's after the total number that we receive back.
63% of the membership cast a ballot in the last CCNR election. So last year, 63% of the 6,102 owners cast ballots. We needed 67% of the number, total number of members, to vote yes. So the fact that 60, only 63% voted automatically meant that there was a problem in terms of the passage of the ballot. So this year, that's why it's so important, I think maybe that's what Carol Moore is trying to address, it's so important for people to vote this year and to vote yes, because if we don't get the 67%, we're going to be required to continue with the 100% replacement value of insurance.
Yeah. And also to tag on to that, the people that didn't vote made up 37%, and that's just apathy. So we've got to do everything we can to get these people to vote. And I know some people that do not want to vote, but this affects everyone, and everyone in Third Mutual has, has a stake in what happens. So we do need everybody to vote if it's possible.
Let, let me take this a step further, if you don't mind, President Parsons. Everybody keeps hearing, we're talking about $93 per manor per month increase if the amendment does not pass. Where did we come up with the $93 per manor per month? Maybe it'd be very helpful if you understood that. We are only allowed by law to raise the monthly assessment 20% in any given year. You currently pay, most of you, $672 per manor per month. Of that $672 that you pay, $204 comes off the top to, as for GRF, in terms of the operation of all the amenities. So in fact, you pay for Third Mutual $468 per month. If you take 20% of the $468, that's how you come up with the $93. That's the maximum that we can raise the assessment this year. We would actually be in more difficulty if this amendment does not pass, because if we have to buy the $1.6 billion of coverage, it's going to cost way more than the $93 per manor per month. We'll have to take money out of other funds, we'll have to cut back on services, et cetera, if this amendment doesn't pass. That's just where we are. But that's how we came up with the $93 per manor per month. What passing this amendment will hopefully do is, will give us the flexibility to buy less than the full coverage, and therefore, keep the assessment that's going to take place less than the $93 per manor per month. Please understand, I don't want to mislead people. Please understand, even if this amendment passes, there's still going to be a substantial increase in the assessment, but hopefully, but we don't believe it'll be anywhere near the $93 per manor per month. It'll be considerably less. So that's why we really need your support. I hope that helps in understanding it.
Yeah. And also, the board is running different scenarios. We started last week with them, looking at them, what we could do if it passes or if it doesn't pass. So we've got a bunch of those we're going through, people are studying them. So know that we're trying to do everything we can to keep it down as much as possible. Okay. Next caller.
Director Wayne has a comment.
Okay. Great. Go ahead.
There was a part two to Carol's question. Can we address that?
Can you restate what you thought of what? Can you restate what you thought it was?
Grant, can you reread that question, please?
The question was, "Do you have the numbers regarding ballot receivable from the previous election? I am referring to when most arrived, et cetera."
So her question is, "When did most of the ballots received arrive?"
They went to the inspector of elections.
No, they went to the inspector of elections. And as you know, we extended the time period. So I'm not sure, at least I don't have a breakdown of when they came in. I know initially, there weren't a lot of them that hit the deck, so to speak, that we received. But more came in later. But I do not have a breakdown on when they were received. That's all in the hands of the inspector of elections.
I think that answers her question as best we can answer it.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Craig.
The next comment is from Susan Smallwood.
Okay. Morning, Susan. Susan, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sure can.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
Okay, first, I, yes, I can hear you, thank you. I want to confirm, have all the ballots been mailed out? And number two, I'd like to thank the board members who joined us on Saturday for the car rally. It was wonderful to be able to be together in order to help get this yes vote passed. And my last item is, there are a lot of elderly residents. And if you know of a resident who might need some help in your cul-de-sac, knock on their door and see if they need help with their ballot. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I'll ask our secretary here if she's heard any information on if there are any ballots yet to be mailed. I have not heard of any, so.
All ballots, all ballots have been mailed out.
And I've received it. And it's in an envelope. And you have another envelope in there, a couple of them, actually. And the ballot to look at, as well as a definition of what we're doing.
And actually, Steve, if you check your thing, that it'll tell you the date that the ballots were actually mailed out.
The ballots were mailed on May the 28th.
May the 28th, that's when they were mailed.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, any other callers?
Director Dodson just wanted to say, please give the phone number of where to get a ballot if yours has not arrived. And please sign the envelope on the ballot.
Okay, Lynn, you want to provide it again? Or I have it here. You can call this phone number if you need a ballot that you didn't receive. But remember that the ballots are for the owners or members only. If you are leasing, it's not applicable to you. But here's the phone number you can call. Once again, area code 855-240-0363. Okay. We have another caller.
The next comment is from Amy Rehmacher. At the May 14th meeting, board members stated that establishing minimum level of insurance based on total property valuation would, one, restrict board; two, might not even be achievable; three, might be too costly. Now you state that the times two PML is a floor. A floor is another name for minimum level. You just base it on times two PML instead of total value. You are inconsistent in your explanations.
Well, I don't, I don't think that we were being inconsistent. If I understand correctly, we're talking about the floor or the minimum of two times the PML as the minimum insurance we would purchase. That doesn't mean that we would, that's what we would actually purchase. If there's more available at a reasonable cost, we'll purchase whatever we can that's appropriate to try to protect the interests of the village, actually of Third Mutual. So I don't understand fully the question on inconsistency. I'm sorry, if they could either write back in and restate it a little more clearly, I would be more than happy to try to answer it.
Okay.
A question from Nancy says, "Thank you. How does one calculate PML and who does that?"
PML is calculated by a private firm that is employed by the broker. It's an independent evaluation. They typically come to the, to the village. They tour the buildings. They make an estimate based on their evaluate, not the evaluation of the replacement cost, but what they then perceive based upon where the fires might be and things of that nature. They determine what the actual maximum loss could be in any one incident. So in other words, if there was a fire, the PML, the probable maximum loss, they're saying for any one major incident, would be $145 million. That was what was calculated last year.
Okay, another thing that might help a little bit is in our proposed language, we use the term "not prohibited by residential mortgage" and secondary mortgage markets. Robert, would you like to comment or define those a little bit? People may not understand what those are. Residential mortgage and secondary mortgage markets.
All right, residential mortgage, obviously. Lots of people carry a mortgage on their manor. You've gone to a bank, you've procured a loan. That's a residential mortgage. Many of those mortgage lenders then sell their mortgage on the secondary market. Fannie Mae, for example, buys up lots of secondary mortgages. Fannie Mae has requirements of what percentage of the replacement value you have to insure to be able, for them to be willing to buy mortgages on the secondary market. So the lower you go in terms of the level of the insurance compared to the replacement cost, the more questionable it becomes whether Fannie Mae or other organizations will buy mortgages on the secondary market. Because they want to be assured that if there's a problem, that their investment in that secondary mortgage market is real and will be fulfilled by the insurance companies.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
Joe Camera comments, "How did the $3 million increase get approved last year? This seems like a raid is being made by the insurance industry. Please review fiduciary obligations to spend the members' money wisely." Thank you.
Well, Joe, we do take this very seriously. And we spend a lot of time between last year and up to this point just going over facts and figures and what's required by governmental entities. So on some of these things, we don't really have a choice. Other things, we might be able to, like you just heard Director Mouchnick, talk about other governmental entities who buys them like Fannie Mae. But they pretty much tell us what we have to do to be covered. So we take this up in our board meetings. And we have brought it forward last town hall meeting, and as well as last fall. So I hope that helps you better understand.
Joe, I'm going to have to agree with you on this one. I know I disagreed with you on the last one, and I gave you an answer that you didn't like on the last one. But on this one, I will fully agree with you. Yes, it was a sticker shock to all the board members when we got the bill for the insurance. When it went from, remember, previously, we were covered as a whole village for $700 million in insurance. And the whole village went to $3.4 billion. So we all experienced major sticker shock when the rates went up as dramatically as they did. So, yeah, we're just as concerned about that as you are. And I fully agree with you. We need to be very, very careful on how we spend the members' money in this regard. So thank you. Appreciate your comment.
Next caller, please.
This comment is from Catherine Freshley. "You need to explain that last year, you used the disaster reserve funds to supplement the insurance fees. That cannot be continued, and the fund needs to be replaced. Last year, the $3 million increase is $40 PM at minimum without any other increases for operations."
Okay, Catherine, thank you. And I'd be happy to point out, you're right. Last year, when we raised the assessment, it was $20 per manor per month. However, Catherine is exactly correct. We had to take money out of the disaster fund. We took $46 per manor per month out of the disaster fund to cover the additional increases in insurance. That was a one-time-only possibility. And Catherine is also correct. We need to replenish that disaster fund, that $46 per manor per month. And that's part of where some of the money has to go, is to replace that disaster fund. So yes, Catherine, you're exactly right. We did not pass on all of the increase to the members last year. We just didn't feel that we could pass on what would amounted to a $66 per manor per month increase. We went with 20 instead. And we're now facing a similar kind of situation with the increase in rates. And since we can't go back to the disaster fund in the same way, we have no choice but to pass it on to the members unless we get a positive vote that allows us to purchase less than 100% replacement cost. Thank you. Thanks, Catherine, for that, helping us direct that.
The next comment will be Stephanie Brown.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I had actually taken my hand back down because the questions were then asked. But I think, I think it's beneficial to help everybody understand, even though you've had lots of town hall meetings and material that went out in the mail, you know, what the PML was. And I think, I think it's been explained since I raised my hand. But I just wanted people to understand that just because we're not going with 100% of, insurance of 100% of the properties that we have in Third Mutual, that PML is, has been assessed. It's been done by an independent party. And it's a maximum probable loss given any one given likely disaster. And correct me if I'm wrong, that, that doesn't mean that we can't have a catastrophic loss for everything on the property if we got hit by 10 meteorites at once. But, but if someone could just elaborate on that, even though it's been done before. So people have reassurance that if there is a catastrophic loss, it's likely to hit a portion of Third and not 100% of Third. And we're actually looking to ensure double what that PML is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Want to talk that? Okay. The PML, as Robert mentioned earlier, was done by a private company that's recognized by insurance companies to do this form of evaluation. Throughout their process, they determined that for the entire village, Laguna's Village, that the probable maximum loss would be $145 million. So as you can tell just by that, that doesn't cover anywhere close to everything that is valued in Third Mutual, much less United. So, but between everything here, and let's say, a big fire comes up. And it sweeps up. It's from offshore to onshore. And a fire comes up and hits us. They took that into consideration. If that would be the case, they still think the probable maximum loss is $145 million. So that's their evaluation. Like Stephanie has said, this would not, the probable maximum loss would not cover everything if it was destroyed, especially by meteorites. But we think that that's the most significant thing that would happen. And that's what the company took into consideration.
I just want to add one thing to that. Please understand, the probable maximum loss is per incident. That doesn't mean there couldn't be multiple incidents in the same year. So you could have a $145 million loss today. And then a month from now, you could have another fire, another problem, have another $145 million loss. The good news, though, is that insurance is not aggregated. By that, I mean, you don't say, okay, we have $300 million in coverage, and we have a $150 million fire today. And then a month from now, we have another $150 million fire. And then another month from then, we have a third $150 million fire. You're saying, okay, if it was aggregate, we're only covered for $300 million. No, we're covered for $150 million in each of those incidents, if they're separate incidents. As long as one incident doesn't exceed the $300 million I used in that example, we would be covered. Okay, so I want to make sure that you understand that PML only relates to each individual incident. Okay? Not what's expected over the course of a whole year.
Okay, next caller or comment?
We have a comment from Eric Karamat. The comment is, "I did not know about the $93 per month."
That's a total comment? Okay. I think Director Mouchnick covered that earlier and defined what it was. So I think we've answered that question?
He has also stated, "I hope more notice the fact before the vote day."
Could you repeat that, Grant?
The comment says, "I hope more notice the fact before the vote day." Perhaps he is stating, he wants to make sure that people know that that will be the case before the vote day.
Absolutely. Good point, thank him. Yes, it's very important that people understand that the $93 per manor per month is a very, very real figure if the vote fails. Okay? Because we will get, as we pointed out earlier, we will be required to buy the maximum amount of insurance that's available to us. And if 1.6 billion is available, that $93 per manor per month, I can guarantee you, will be assessed. And even then, it won't be enough to cover the cost of the insurance. So please, yes, thank you very much. You're right, we need to point that out more frequently to people. But it is a very, very real possibility if we don't get this vote approved. Thank you.
And also, I just wanted to add to what Director Mouchnick said to Eric. Even though today is our last town hall meeting, the board is totally committed to continuing to get the information out to residents to remind them that it really is important to cast your vote and to vote yes. And we still have some time left to get that information out there again and again. Thank you.
We have another comment from Nancy. It says, "Why was the language removed about 5% max deductible? And how to deal with any changes made in the Civil Code?"
Can you read that one more time, please?
"Why was the language removed about 5% max deductible? And how to deal with any changes made in the Civil Code?"
Yeah, what's in Civil Code is there. We can't bypass it. We can't change it without going through due process. But we are following Civil Code, as well as Davis Sterling Act, which is in line with that. So that's all I can see from it at this time.
I can answer the part about... I can answer the part about the 5% deductible issue. The 5% deductible issue, you have to remember when, these are from 1989, the CCNRs, and the insurance industry has dramatically changed in that time period. Last year, we had a $10,000 deductible. Okay? This year, the insurance companies mandated that the minimum deductible that they would write was $25,000 per incident. Now, we're being told that this coming year, when we renew our insurance, that the insurance companies will only write a minimum of $100,000 deductible. So the whole issue with this 5% deductible against expenses is is really immaterial when the insurance companies are the ones driving the deductible. So we really don't have any control. That's why that language needs to come out, no matter what, because it's just not applicable to the industry today.
Yeah, and it's total industry-wide from what we've heard.
Yeah, I guess let me let me share with you. Understand, insurance companies are in business to make money. We all know that. And we are dealing with insurance companies that are international companies. So they are doing business all around the world. And when disasters strike elsewhere in the world, that impacts the cost of insurance for us. Now we're entering the hurricane season on the East Coast and in the Gulf of Mexico, and whatever damages are done by hurricanes there, a company like Travelers who insures our first $50 million this year, they are insuring areas along the coast of the east side of this of the country, as well as the Gulf of Mexico, and they're going to experience losses there. All of that have to be mitigated in terms of what they charge for premiums that impact our premiums. Also, California this year, as Secretary Jarrett pointed out in a previous town hall, in California, they're expecting the worst wildfire season this year than they have in any number of years. So we're expecting serious problems and the insurance companies, we've already been told by some companies, they will not write insurance for us anymore because of where we're located. They don't want to put at risk their capacity for us. Also, understand something, and maybe this will be a little bit helpful, too. We, our buildings are 50 years old. They are frame and stucco. They do not have sprinkler systems. Because of that, insurance companies do not look favorably upon us because if there was a fire, it would it could expand considerably because of the kind of structure we have, the aging structure and the lack of lack of sprinkler systems. So if you're an insurance company and you're looking at where you want to put your capacity and you have a brand-new development that meets all the current codes, you'd rather insure there than you would here. But if you're going to insure here, you're going to charge us more because of the potential for the problem. So please understand, all of this is based upon what's going on not only here in Orange County or in Laguna Woods, but what's going on in the state, what's going on in the country, and what's going on worldwide.
Thank you, Robert. Next comment?
We have a comment from Catherine Freshley. Comment is, the history of losses should be explained. Since 1996, the maximum loss for any one occurrence has been 10 million. This is an important consideration when making the decision.
Catherine Freshley again is correct. The maximum loss we have had in any one incident has been about $10 million. So she's correct, and that's one of the reasons for looking at two times the PML as a way of protecting us as opposed to the maximum of 100%. There hasn't really been a need in all of those years for any more than a $10 million policy in any one particular incident. So she's correct.
We have a comment from Nancy. The comment is, thank you. If there was a large event that came to more than the PML, what would happen then?
All right, thank you, Nancy. If we had a loss, let's say that we had two times the PML, $290 million of coverage. And let's just suppose, following her example, let's suppose the loss was $400 million. The insurance companies would pay out the $290 million. We would be short $110 million. We would have at that point no choice but to have a special assessment of all of the members of Third Mutual, all 6,102 owners, and we would divide that $110 million by 6,102 owners, which would be approximately $16,000 per manner, per owner, to make up that $110 million loss.
There are no further questions.
Okay. Any comments by the board member or panel members here?
Yes.
Okay, Director Jarrett?
I'd like to say also that bear in mind, one Garden Villa building to be replaced would be in the neighborhood of $6 million. And as you know, some of these three-story buildings are clustered together. So if we get a wildfire with a lot of wind, you can imagine there would be several three-story buildings going down. So we got to, we have to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, let me ask about board members on Zoom or TV6. Any comments from them?
I do not see any others.
Okay. Director Jarrett has another comment?
Earlier, I gave my name and phone number out for anyone on GVA buildings that have any questions about the recreation rooms being open. But I would really like you to please call the president of the GVA, and his name is Stuart Hack, and his number is 949-212-7028. Thank you.
Okay.
We do have a comment that just came in from Alice Weston. The comment is, could the maximum loss of 10 million mentioned by Catherine Freshley be adjusted for inflation and used to negotiate the insurance policy amount? Also, would it be costly prohibitive to install sprinkler systems in the public buildings?
Well, first off, to my knowledge, Third Mutual doesn't have any public buildings. They're residential in nature. We would have to deal with that separately and different from like what you would do with a clubhouse or something like that. As far as putting sprinkler systems in, that is very, very expensive. You have to run new lines, you have to run sprinkler heads, you have to get the authority from El Toro Water District. So there's a lot of logistics involved in something like that. And as I see it right now, we don't have the funds to start a project like that.
To answer the other part of the question, they asked about indexing the $10 million and using that as a figure to negotiate with insurance companies. The answer is, the amendment speaks to a minimum of two times the PML. So even indexing that $10 million would not even address getting near the two times the PML. So right now, the amendment that's before everybody is two times the PML. And also, just as a follow-up, please understand that if we tried to insure for $10 million, and let's say in today's money, and that, let's say that was $30 million, right? If we tried to insure for that, the banks would just laugh at us. We wouldn't have any of the banks interested in doing any business in Third Mutual.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Catherine Freshley has a comment. The comment is, you might explain that an individual can purchase a rider for coverage of special assessment in their HO6 policy.
That's correct. You need to check with your individual insurance carrier and ask them about HO6 policies, which that's one of the provisions. Also, the the time of loss, if for some reason something happened in your building, you couldn't reside there, that insurance would pick up if you had to stay in a motel or some other place of lodging until your unit could be fixed up again. So Dan Yost is on staff. He can be contacted, and he can explain thoroughly what an HO6 policy is, and he can talk to your individual insurance carrier. Any other comments?
That concludes the comments.
Okay. Do we have any comments from our board members not in the boardroom? Debbie, no. Craig, no. John Frankel? Don't see a hand from him. Okay, we'll come back to our panelists. Any other questions or comments? Director Jarrett? Okay, Annie? Ralph?
No comment. The only thing I can think of is is that insurance is something that we have to pay and hope we never collect on.
True. Okay, Robert, any parting comments? Okay. Thank you so much for the people that submitted their information and questions. And once again, if you don't have all the information you need, we've given you referrals as to how to get in contact with us. Staff, you can contact them. They'll pass it on to us and we'll get back to you.
Steve?
Yes.
I have something, one thing I just thought of, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to thank all of the members of the community who have taken on a very active role in trying to help get this amendment passed. There are folks that it's now been a pleasure to work with you, and we look forward to the cooperative effort that we've engaged in continuing, not only for this issue, but as we move forward on other issues. We really think it's important that the board and the membership work together. We also want to thank some of the members who helped craft the wording that is in the amendment. What we, when we sent out the original draft and we gave people till May 5 to make comments and suggestions about altering the draft, the wording of the draft, that what the final amendment would be, we had a number of members in the community step forward, and there was a lot of give and take and back and forth discussion over the course. It happened to be Mother's Day weekend, but we did that and we reached an understanding of what the wording should be. So I want to thank those people in the community who actively participated and continue to participate. So thank you.
And everybody that participated today, we thank you so much for that. As a parting comment, I just want to remind everybody, I hope you don't get too excited and overexhausted looking at the 15th of June for opening. Remember, your system may not be as strong or as healthy as it once was. So please, if you do exercises, please take it at a lower rate to start with and build upon that. So thank you for everyone who's been part of our process today, and we look forward to having you at our board meeting coming up on the 15th. Thank you so much.